Okay.
Yes.
Calling the meeting to order at 7:07.
I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:07.
Okay.
May I please, are my students here because I don't see them? Are they there?
We're here, Ms. Carmody. We're in the.
Okay, I see Brett. Brett, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Of course.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
Dan, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Brett. Continuing on with the meeting, we have our celebration of excellence, which is why we have everyone here and what makes us so happy. And Mr. Canelon, no, Mr. Rissler, I think is going to, where is he? I don't see him, but.
Hi, Ms. Carmody.
There you are. Okay, I think, are you going to begin this or is Tim going to begin this?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna turn it over to, to Mr. Rissler, but first I want to thank everyone for coming. I'd like to thank all of our, our students, our student athletes, family members for coming. These are, these are wonderful celebrations and we certainly have quite a group of, an excellent group of students and student athletes here with us tonight. And I would like to turn it over to Mr. Rissler. Mr. Rissler, I believe we'll go through the groups, the way they are listed on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct. And Ms. Carmy, when it's appropriate for you to do something with the certificate, just let me know.
Okay, I'll do it after you finish each group. I'll do it, yes, I'll do it after each group, okay?
That will be perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Carmody, and thank you, Mr. Canelon. We're so appreciative in athletics for the support of the board members and the district leadership during the recently concluded, concluded fall season. Thank you. On behalf of all of our Blue Knights student athletes and their families and coaches, couldn't have done it without you. Before we get started with tonight's recognition, I would be remiss if I didn't take a brief moment to celebrate and salute all of our Blue Knights student athletes in this unprecedented year and their respective coaches and family members for the tremendous courage, determination, perseverance in making the fall season a reality. Through it all, the delay of the full beginning, competition season, the multitude of postponements and rescheduled practices and games, the tolerance of and adherence to the safety mitigation strategies of practicing and warming up in small cohorts, to the in-game strategies to fight off the coronavirus, and then, of course, the quarantine. Through it all, we did not receive a single complaint from a student athlete. They made it, they made it happen. They got it done every day and they, when they were given the opportunity to do so. So, I just want to thank them. We're always going to remember these athletes during these times. They made us proud, as they epitomized the saying, more than ever this fall, once a Blue Knight, always a Blue Knight. So, thank you to the student athletes, all of them, this fall. Now, to introduce three Southern High School Lady Knights, Blue Knights teams who took it to the next level, and were not only teams of excellence this fall, they are each arguably one of the best teams in their sport in Sinton School history. Yes, we have the research to show it. First up, to speak on behalf of the girls' swimming and diving team, head coach Evan Tutt. Evan?
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Rissler, and Mr. Canelon, Mr. Medancy, Chairwoman Carmody, and all Board of Ed members. A special shout out to Mr. Brown, who served as an inspiration and role model to myself personally, when I was beginning my career at SHS in the classroom and on the pool deck. And thank you so much for sending us some time this evening to honor our student athletes who have excelled in their respective sports, in classrooms and in our community, especially in the face of seemingly insurmountable adversity over the past nine months. And I wish to extend a congratulations to our girls' soccer programs and our girls' cross-country programs as well, for their truly remarkable seasons. Now, I know we have quite a bit of formal business to tackle as well, so I will try to keep this quick. You honor us this evening by recognizing the outstanding season that the girls' swim and dive team has produced. But before I can elaborate just exactly what that is, what we have accomplished, I must thank those who have made it possible. From the support of our athletic department, the staff at the YMCA, our booster board, who has always gone above and beyond in their mission to support this program, but this year more than any other has truly made our season possible. To all our parents who navigated the added regulations, provided individual rides, watched virtual meets, and took on additional burdens to ensure their child continued to have the opportunity to swim and dive. Of course, to our incredible coaching staff, Coach Haynes and Coach Zagorski, for your devotion to these young ladies and your support and your friendship, it is truly appreciated. The support that all of you provided allowed for this team to overcome the various obstacles within their path and to achieve the success they had this past season. But ultimately, it was up to the athletes to do well with what was in their control and to see the added adversity of the COVID-limited season as not a barrier, but an opportunity to overcome. And they did exactly that. Not only did your 2020 girls' swim and dive team, as Mr. Rissler had already mentioned, is arguably the most all-around talented girls' swim and dive program in school history, complete the 2020 season undefeated, but did so in impressive and record-setting fashion. If you look at a few of the numbers from throughout the season, from first meet to last, there were 72 total events throughout our season. And your Southington Swim and Dive Team won all 72 of those events and secured a first-place finish in 70 out of those 72 events. Now, at the end of the season, all programs within the state electronically submitted best times and scores in order to compile some sort of standings. And to give it a little perspective, there are 12 events in a swim and dive meet. And when the Central Connecticut conferences and all programs compiled their top 16 athletes in each event, your Southington swimmers and divers accounted for 23 top 16 finishers out of those 12 events. And ultimately, that number would have been higher, yet a team is limited to one real A and real A events and three individuals per individual.
Celebration of excellence.
Your team is also due all-state honorees this year, in seniors Kelly Parati and Megan Hammerland. Your athletes also took down two more school records as well, one that had stood since 2006 and was broken by Lizzie Bollier, and another that had stood since 1982 and was broken by freshman Ella Native. In fact, if you look at the Southington Girls' Swim and Dive Record Board as a whole, you'll see 22 total names on that record board. 13 of those 22 names are from the team that you see before you on this Zoom tonight, which is truly remarkable. So, as you can see, these numbers speak for themselves, and they certainly paint a picture of how truly talented and successful your 2020 Girls' Swim and Dive program is. But they are but a mere fraction of what they have actually achieved. And that, which I am most proud of, and I'm sure you are as well, is not what you can measure with stats on a page, but the intangibles that can only be assessed by person-to-person interactions and the impressions that we leave on each other. Your 2020 Girls' Swim and Dive Team are 45 resilient, determined, and devoted student athletes who have refused to give in at every opportunity, even when it certainly would have been easier to do so. They have met the added stress and obstacles of the past season head-on with a stubborn determination to be their best each and every single day. And they did so while looking out for each other, being the best teammates, as well as the best athletes. And they leave behind a legacy of excellence that all future teams will strive to live up to. And to each of our athletes, especially our seniors, Sephora Aktus, Lizzie Bollier, Skylar Bravil, Avery Halloran, Kayla Nguyen, Kelly Parati, Jennifer McGletty, Megan Hammerland, Andy Nadeau, Adessa Noise, and Maddy Semeco, each of you have been pivotal in getting this team to the level we are at, and we are forever in your debt. And to all of my athletes, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, I express to each of you a profound thank you. It has truly been an honor to be your coach. And as we move forward, please remember and please continue to do well with what is in your control. Continue to make the right choices rather than the easy ones. And remember that you are powerful and you can and will achieve your goals. And while today is certainly a great day, it will not be as good as we can make tomorrow. And so, as I turn it back over to Mr. Rissler and to the board, I thank you once again for this recognition and for this platform. And as you can clearly see, this honor you bestow upon this program is well-founded and has been earned by countless hours and relentless toil and is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Coach Tuttle. Ms. Carmody, would you like to?
Yes, I will. Evan, so very well said. And I can look at your face and see how proud you are of your team. And I'm sure they are just as proud to have you with us. I have a plaque that I'm going to read, and I'm going to show it to you. Can you even see this, Evan?
Yes, I can, I can see it.
Let me read to you what's said on it, and I will be bringing this back to the board so that you can pick it up, okay? But I'd like to read what it does say. Having, Southern High School Blue Knights, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Southington Public Schools, is hereby.
Terry, you muted.
You muted yourself.
Somehow you muted yourself.
There you go. There you are.
Perfect.
And witness thereof of the seal of the Southington Board of Education, the signature of the Board of Education chairperson, and the superintendent of schools on this day, the 10th of December. And this is a beautiful, beautiful plaque, which will be, I will bring to Debbie Albadas, and you can pick that up at any time, okay, Evan? And thank you, and thank you to all of the girls and to all of the families, as you said, that had to drive them, pick them up, and we are just so very proud of you. Our sincere thanks.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Rissler? Am I still muted?
No, I think you're good. You're good, Terry.
Okay.
So, if I could proceed, Ms. Carmody, to the next team. At this point, by the way, the girls were the Region B, the girls' swimming and diving were the CCC Region B Champions. Congratulations again. Now, we'd like to tell you about one of the most successful soccer teams in school history over the past few years, culminating with this year's perfect, undefeated, and untied season. To tell you about it, the head coach of the Lady Blue Knights Soccer Team, Coach Mike Lenahan. Mike?
Thank you, Steve. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
There you go. We, we, the girls' soccer team, first like to congratulate the girls' swim and dive team and the girls' cross-country team for an outstanding and amazing season. We've also, before we recognize the Varsity Girls' Soccer Team, we'd like to thank a few other folks in support of our team. First, we'd like to thank Ms. Carmody, Board Chairman, and members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent Tim Canelon, Principal Frank Pepe, and wow, what can we say? We just want to thank you, thank you, thank you for just giving us the opportunity to play. We recognize you were in our face with many difficult decisions and challenges due to COVID, and we thank you for the opportunity and the understanding of the balance of safety, health, and the experience that you allowed us to have on the field. We can't tell you how much we thank you. And where do we begin when it comes to thanking Athletic Director Steve Rissler? He was my first call in the morning and always my last call in the evening for 77 days. Yes, counted every day of it. We did talk and we sweated out the details to make it right. Steve, we thank you for all the support that you provided. You were a valuable resource, a mentor, and a fan, and a true fan throughout the process. We thank you. The Varsity Team, the 2020 Varsity Team capped a spotless 14-0 record, ranked unofficially number one in the C I A C Class L rankings, double L rankings, and number two in New England, ranked by the New England Soccer Journal. The team earned the CCC Region B Championship with an impressive victory of 6-0 in the finals versus Lewis Mills. And yet, a year ago, some of you might remember, there were tears, though, when an undefeated season was denied in the state finals. But there were no tears this year, as we went undefeated and we seen, we saw the season all the way through. The team was led by a dynamic, outstanding senior class, along with a solid group of juniors, sophomores, and Ms. Riley, our only freshman. This team enters the Southington record books as the first girls' soccer team to go undefeated and unbeaten in a single season. Even the talented 2002 team, which earned a share of the Class Double L state title at 17-0-3, cannot lay claim to this, to this accomplishment. The team started the year knowing that they would not be playing for a state title, but instead made it a point to win everything that they could to win. At this time, we would like to recognize the 11 seniors on the team and thank them for their collective contribution to the past four years. Captain Allison Carr, goalie Emily Igo, Morgan Hubert, Marissa Emmy, Savannah Crum, Brianna Lenahan, Shannon Litchfield, captain, Michaela Patomas, Tally Richardson, captain Abby Soha, and Lauren Verilli. The impact of this group of players had on the program is absolutely amazing. As freshmen in 2017, the team scored 54 goals and allowed 12 with a final record of 12, 4, and 2. Made the state tournament, however, losing an exciting game to Litchfield 2-1, who eventually won the Class Double L tournament. As sophomores in 2018, the team scored 51 goals, allowed five with a final record of 16 2-0, and made the state tournament, if many remember, lost against Simsbury, double overtime, and eventually lost to penalty kicks. As juniors in 2019, the team scored 61 goals, allowed only six, with a final record of 17 1-2, and went to the state finals, losing to Glastonbury 1-0. And as seniors, in 2020, the team scored 64 goals, allowed five, and had a final record of 14-0, and were the CCC Region B Champions. When you look at the four years of what this senior class has been a part of, we have scored a combined 230 goals, conceded 28, won 59 games, lost seven, and tied four. Can you all please help me in congratulating our seniors and the entire 2020 Varsity Team for their.
Yes, wonderful. Way to go, girl. Way to go. Girl power.
Before, Ms. Terry, before, I do want to offer a special congratulations to a couple of folks that make this happen. I want to give special thanks to the Lady Knights Booster Club. I know they're on the call. Franca Emmes, leadership, board members, Katie Bowman, Tracy Hubert, Lynn Patomas, and all the volunteers that make a program like this happen. Franca, Tracy, Lynn, as senior parents, thank you all for your leadership and the support and friendship that we've had over the last four years. We also want to thank the coaching staff, preseason coaches, Jim Emmy, Kevin Hubert, Paul Soha, and the in-season coaches, Courtney Ladati, Mike Dagata, and Alexa Casamino. This program doesn't exist without the excellent coaching that you provide and provide the girls' chemistry. And finally, we do want to thank, especially thank, the parents and the guardians on this call this evening. We thank you for what you have done all season, for the weekends that you know that you weren't able to visit your families, for the social parties that you did not attend, for the wearing of the masks, and for ensuring your daughter followed this proper daily self-evaluation protocol. You all made this season happen because we were all in it together. And I can't tell you how much I thank you all. So, we look forward to celebrating, hopefully, across your fingers, we'll have our celebration, hopefully, next year at the Aquaturf. But again, we thank the Board of Ed for this wonderful recognition. We thank you very much for it. We hope you all enjoy the holidays and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Lenahan. We are so proud of you, girls. I'd like to also show you this plaque, Mr. Lenahan. I don't know if you can see it. I'll read it to you.
Thank you.
I will have it at the Board of Ed for you to pick up so that you can share with your girls. We are so very proud. And girls, really, girls rule. Let me just say that, okay? I'm not allowed, but I'm going to say it anyways. Having duly, the Southington Blue Knights, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Southington Public Schools, is hereby awarded the certificate of excellence for girls' soccer CCC Regional B Champions Fall 2020. And witness whereof, the seal of the Southington Board of Education, the signature of the Board of Education chairperson, and the superintendent of schools are here unto a fix on this 10th day of December 2020. Our sincere congratulations to all of you girls. Girls rule. Keep it up. Next year is going to be even better. Thank you so much. Thank you to the parents and all the support that everyone has given to our students. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But thank you, Ms. Carmody. So, we'll go to our final team of excellence tonight at this time. It's a team and a program, actually, that is on the move, getting plenty of attention and notice, and would have been competing for a C I A C state championship this fall if the championship meets could have been held. A terrific group of female student athletes that have an incredible work ethic. To tell you all about them, here's our head coach of girls' cross-country, Coach Dan Dashalay. Coach?
Hi there. Thanks, Steve. First of all, thank you, Board of Education, and the staff at Southern High School for organizing this. We never thought we were going to be able to pull off this season in its entirety, and, and we did. And so much of that, our ability to have this season was due to what the district, the high school, the A.D.'s office was able to support. At the end of the season, after the championship was over, the boosters spent some money on us, and they had made a T-shirt. And on the back of the shirt was something we've been saying from the very beginning of the year, which is, we ran every race like it was our last. And I think that really sums up the season, and we really appreciate what the board was able to do to allow this. And I'd like to take a second to also thank Steve Rissler, who was, went above and beyond this year to make sure we had a season. Like Mike, I think I had more calls with him than my wife, my kids, my coaches combined. There's never been a season like this, and thank you from the bottom of my heart for carrying this burden on your shoulders, and you bore it well. And I think that you really did a great service to this school and this, this athletic program because of that. Coming into this season, we knew we had a good team. For those of you that don't know, a cross-country team is comprised of seven athletes that score in the championship meet, with five of them actually doing the scoring. We knew we were going to be good. We knew we were going to be fast, but we didn't really realize that we had, we were going to end up with this result. Like any other season, unlike any other season, we normally race teams like Glastonbury, Hall. They were state open champions last year. We raced, we, we, everybody in our conference was one of the top teams in the conference, if Connecticut. And this year, we didn't have that opportunity to race these teams. So, I know you guys, you realize that we won the regional championship for CCC. But what I don't know if you're aware of, but we raced, in every single race, if you look at the races we run, only one girl in an opposing team broke into our top five in every one of our dual races.
Oh, great.
We were never able to race against, head-to-head against other teams. But if you look at the times we combined, at the end of the year, you take all the teams in this, we were the second fastest time, team in the state of Connecticut. And if you raced them and scored them head-to-head, we would have been the fastest team in the state. These ladies rewrote the record book. The top five runners in the school were, the top five on this team were the top five runners in the history of the school program. And in the, and if this had been a normal season, they undoubtedly would have been the first team to qualify for the New England Championships in the history of the school. And they may have even been able to make it to the Nike Cross Nationals, which is taking the entire team to Portland, Oregon for a, the national championship race. So, but I think what really made this season special was the fact that they had to do this all by themselves every single race. And like every program out there, you get up for games, you get up for races, and these ladies didn't have that competition in their dual races because of the nature of how we were structuring the regions. So, they had, they were doing basically time trials against themselves and running these incredible, credible times from the gun with just them against each other. And, and I think this is attributed to this, a perfect mix of older runners combined with a couple new freshmen that came in that, that, that just sparked life into this, this team. Also, the combined team energy that we had was, which was 70 athletes, where so many people were pushing and pushing, whether it be JV or varsity, it was just a fantastic energy on this team. And I think a lot of the, the team drew from that. So, it was, it was just a special season for everybody, I think. I'd like to do a special thanks to our seniors on the squad. We have, we had, this is by far the biggest senior class that we have ever had on the ladies' side. So, Jordan Regala, Faith Cosiers, Sarah Altamari, Lexi Zazinski, Kami Connolly, Jasmine Hallett, Natalie Reeves, Jenna Morgan, Diane Pillsbury, and Grace Michaud. Some of these guys were with me for four years. Some of them joined this year, but they all brought with them a great amount of leadership, and they've left a legacy on SHS cross-country. And finally, I want to give huge thanks to Coach Pierce and Coach Green for all the energy that they brought to this very, very unique year. I couldn't have done it without them. We all bring something different and unique to the table in terms of personalities, and I think we just have a great mix. And I think a lot of what happened this year was, coaching became very important this year, and being able to work with the kids in this very unique time. So, I appreciate very much. So, thank you, athletes that are on this call. I appreciate you guys so much. It's been a phenomenal year that I'll never forget. Back to you, Steve.
Thank you, Coach, so much. And thank you to all the coaches. Terry, I think you have something to present.
Yes, Dan. Congratulations. It has been a difficult year, and what you coaches have done and what the kids have done is unbelievable. Again, I have a plaque. It's, I'm even going to hold it up because you really can't see it, but I'm going to read it and bring it to the Board of Ed and ask you to go there to pick it up and so that you can forever cherish this for the kind of year that we have. Southington High School Blue Knights, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Southington Public Schools, is hereby awarded the certificate of excellence for girls' cross-country CCC Regional B Champions Fall of 2020. And witness whereof, the seal of the Southington Board of Education, the signature of the Southington Board of Education chairperson, and the superintendent of schools are here unto a fix on this 10th day of December 2020. I congratulate you. I say to all three coaches and to all of the girls, you don't know how proud I am that it's girl power. Yes. Keep it up. I know it was a difficult year, and you've done a wonderful job, and we're going to hear wonderful, wonderful things next year, too. So, thank you. Have a wonderful Christmas. Stay well, and God bless all of you. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rissler.
Thank you, Ms. Carmody. Thank you to the board and Mr. Canelon. Thank you.
For student athletes, our coaches, and our families, thank you for being here this evening. It's, it's always nice to be able to celebrate student accomplishments. And of course, you can't do it without, without the adults. So, parents, coaches, thank you for all your support. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now, the board does have the rest of its meeting. We, we had a record, 218 participants.
Oh, I think they should.
222, Mr. Canelon.
222. Okay, so I will.
You should all stay and listen to us.
You, you are all more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the board meeting. However, if you, you feel like there are some other things that you need to do, schoolwork for our students perhaps, you, you can feel free to, to leave the meeting as well. So, thank you. Thanks again. Thanks for coming.
Thank you all so very much. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations. Yes, we are very proud. Our, continuing on with our meeting, and please feel free to leave. The first thing we have is approval of minutes from our November 12th meeting. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Clark, do you have any communications from the public that you need to share?
Yes, yes, I do, Mrs. Carmody. I have one email that has, they have asked that we read it into the record tonight, to Mr. Canelon, Mr. Medancy, and that we read it into the record tonight to Mr. Caneland, Mr. Madancy, and all of the Board members. "You may recall I wrote you a letter before the school year started. This one has a slightly different tone, and it is meant to express my deepest gratitude for all that you have done and continue to do to keep our children, especially at the elementary level, fully in school. You have withstood, I am sure, immense pressure from the teachers' union and have stood your ground by listening to science and health professionals. You have realized that the spread of COVID-19 is not happening within the school walls, and in that realization, understand that switching to full remote learning models will not lessen the spread of the disease through our community. You know that attending school, whether you're a teacher or a student, if following the protocol set in place is one of the safer places to be. My children are thriving in the elementary schools. I thank you. I thank their teachers and their principal for all of the safety measures they have put into place and have strictly adhered to all this time to keep our children safe. The children are resilient and have thrived even though, even through adversity, showing their adaptivity and willingness to adjust to whatever situation is handed to them. In these next few months, I hope you all stay safe and healthy. I hope we, we as a community realize that it is our actions outside of the school building that will impact the spread of this disease the most, and I wish you all a wonderful new year." This was signed by Jillian Eckard. And that is the only public communication that I have received.
Well, thank you very much for reading, and that was very nice to hear. And I think we all appreciate hearing that after all of the different opinions that are out there. Thank you. Moving on, I have any communications from Board of Education members? Am I missing anyone? Bob, your hand was up?
And so is mine, so.
And so is mine.
Okay, I'll get you. I'm sorry, Colleen. I don't know who was first.
Bob, let Bob go.
Go ahead.
Okay. I struggled to compose this because frankly, my heart has been broken by the most recent exchange of communications between some of our education community. We are all in this together, need to support each other and work together. First, this is a unique and difficult situation for everyone, the toughest educational conditions public schools have ever faced everywhere. Second, everyone is so stressed. We should all acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our teachers, and in fact, all of our staff who are going far beyond what has ever been asked of them and done their very best amidst very impossible circumstances. We should also realize the extreme stress our administration has been under and their dedication and hard work. Third, there's virtually no agreement on many of these issues between the quote "experts." Are students better off totally at home, totally in school, or a combination? I would say there is no one-size-fits-all solution, not from town to town and not even from school to school. And one solution that may please one group and very well could harm and jeopardize another group. I do believe students and teachers are better off in school, but it must be safe. Fourth, I honestly believe talking with teachers and parents in other towns, as well as many in Southington, that we have done the very best under these trying circumstances. The facts are that no teacher is teaching at their very best. Students are not learning as much as they did before the COVID, and virtually nobody is happy with the present situation anywhere. Fifth, I believe there have been mistakes or poorly worded responses made by many parties involved. I made the mistake of calling for a delay in sending students back to school in August. When I subsequently visited schools, I learned that being in school safely was the best thing for students, teachers, and parents. However, based on recent communications to us and me, and we've all received a bevy of communications, I was no longer sure that this is still true. I do believe, as the superintendent's letters constantly remind us, there have been very few, if any, cases traced to the schools. People are being exposed and are getting sick outside of school and social gatherings, et cetera. Our schools have been extremely careful and safe. And when I also say, this is hard for me to say, there have been statements made and emails sent by some people that include personal attacks, snarky wording, and more, and that never advances our common cause, which is to educate our students in the best and safest ways possible and to maintain the most safely, safety we can for all our staff. Sometimes, simple apologies can help us move forward. I am sorry for the mistakes that I have made. Lastly, I want to ask for all of us to move forward, to look at how we can listen to each other and work on the best solutions for these complex issues, and not go back and point fingers of who said what, who did what, or who made a mistake. We all have. We need more kind, loving respect for each other as everyone struggles through these difficult times. I also ask that we seriously consider the request to go virtual, at least through the holiday break, and perhaps a week afterwards, but consider input from all parties involved, look at viable alternatives, and make the safety of students and staff the first priority, and especially listen to the health experts locally. As the numbers rise, I'm worried we will not be able to maintain the best and safest learning conditions in schools. I also implore all parents and students to be careful and considerate of others this coming holiday season and take the safety precautions medical and scientific experts tell us all to take, including attending gatherings of anyone outside our present living conditions. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. Brown. Thank you very much. And, and, and we are in this together to do what is best for children. So thank you. Mrs. Clark?
Yes, I just wanted to share, and I'm not going to take a lot of time. Cave has been offering webinars during the day, and I've been fortunate in between bleaching of the toys that I have to do at work that I've been able to sit in on a few of them. And I just wanted to share, I've been listening to what they've had to say. I've been listening all summer, but I started finally taking notes to, just so that I could share some of the information, the roles and responsibility of the Board members and the superintendent, the Board's role in the budget process, and the Board's role in advocacy. Or some of the top, three of the webinars that I did manage to take notes from, and I just tried to pick out a few things. When they were talking about the role of the Board, they got into a discussion of the virtual versus the in-person meeting. Some of the communities had tried to hold hybrid meetings, both live and virtual simultaneously, but then reverted back to, to virtual only due to the fact that the technology is not there to do that easily so that everybody can hear and be understood at the meeting. The discussion regarding the virtual meeting, and this was across the board with all communities, it was suggested that we treat a virtual meeting as though it was an in-person meeting with an audience. That's the best way to look at it. They suggested that Board members stay engaged and on camera and behave as though the whole Board was together. That way, it was better for the community to be able to see the faces of all the members and, and to be able to put a voice to the face, that kind of thing. For the budget, they were talking about how the, how the Board of Ed sets the guidelines, the teachers and the principals list the school priorities, the superintendent sets the recommendations to present to the Board, and the Board reviews and makes the changes as needed. What they did stress, however, was to make sure, and I think we do this fairly well, but I want to make sure that we are cognizant of this, that we use plain and simple language when discussing the budget, which is not always easy to do for such a complex document. Every Board member is an ambassador for the budget, once the budget has been passed, and we need to all learn the priorities and share the same message as we go through the, with the public. There was a discussion about return on investment, the return on investment of academic, the return on investment versus fiscal, and making it a different way to look at the dollars spent, as it is generally two-thirds of most town budgets. Towns need to look at in-kind services, and I kind of sat there and said, "We do a good job with this." We're already doing that. We're looking to share our resources with the town side. The quote that, I, I have a quote here that hit me, and I, and I hope to do better with this, but the quote that I pulled from all these three sessions was, "The biggest problem, communication problem is not, is that we do not listen to understand. We listen to respond." So that's what I wanted to share with you from the.
Thank you. That was, that was very good, Mrs. Clark. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome, Mrs. Carmody.
Do I have any other Board members that have?
Yeah, I have my hand up, Mrs. Carmody.
Hi, Dave. You know what? I don't see your hand when it's up. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. So, good evening. I want to utilize my time during Board communications to express my feelings with the superintendent's response to Mr. Daniel Hart. It was not only a condescending response, but it was also disheartening coming from the leader of our district. Many teachers have emailed us Board members with their displeasure with Mr. Caneland's response. Not only as a member of this Board that oversees the superintendent, but also as a teacher in another district myself, I feel obligated to bring this up. So I wanted to take a moment to read the emails into the public record. This email was communicated from Daniel Hart to Mr. Caneland and Mr. Madancy. It's addressed Tim and Steve. "I am sure you are aware of today's headlines regarding a coalition of Connecticut unions who have issued statements and reports advocating for a remote learning model through mid-January due to the holidays and associated risk of COVID-19 exposure for both staff and students. We asked you a couple weeks ago to consider implementing the district's remote learning model due to these circumstances. We hope you will consider moving forward with this model. Many local associations have made this request, made their, this request of their school administration and Board of Education. We also understand that the state government, Governor Lamont and the Connecticut State Department of Education has reinforced keeping schools open. Many teachers in Southington once shared this, this view as well, but since COVID, not, since COVID cases have risen, they no longer do. Survey results of Southington teachers conducted Tuesday, November 24, 2020. As a teacher, do you, the question states, quote, "As a teacher, do you prefer that Southington Public School System implements a full remote learning model?" Oops, sorry. It's moving on to the second screen. Or, "Full remote learning model to mitigate the spread of coronavirus around the holiday season. Yes or no? Seventy-two point four percent responded yes, twenty-seven point six percent responded no. From the high school, there were seventy-seven yeses, twenty-six noes. From the middle school, sixty-one yeses, eleven noes. From the elementary level, one hundred and sixteen yes responses and sixteen-seven no responses." The email ends, "Would, we would like to hear your views on this request and any plans that you may have had, you may have. We also like to communicate this request and survey results to the Board of Education as well, and we'll rate your response." Thank you, Dan. Then the next email reads from Mr. Caneland. Dan?
You know what, Dave? I'm glad, excuse me, Dave, excuse me.
Yes.
I think we all received these emails.
But I would like to get into the public.
Excuse me, if you would let me finish. I do not believe that it is appropriate to be reading something that is going to be derogatory against a member of our administration or of our staff. And I know what the next email is, and I don't think that I want you to read that.
Okay, then I'll continue with what I will have to say if you don't interrupt.
Okay.
So while I believe, I agree with Mrs., Mr. Caneland's response, which all our Board members received, that keeping in-person learning is the best educational and health decision for our students. The superintendent missed the opportunity to have a polite and open dialogue with many hard-working teachers of our district who are concerned about their students' health as well as their health and the health of their families. So with this, I just wanted to, and to be fair to Mr. Caneland as well, I just want to ask why, what, what was the justification of the tone that you had to respond to them?
I don't think, excuse me, Dave. I want to, and I'm not being, I'm not putting you off or being rude, so please don't think that. I do not think this is a conversation that we need to have. Okay? So I am going to cut it off.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just representing.
I'm sorry. I do not think.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Let me finish my statement, please. So I just, I just want to make sure the, the teachers that emailed us were heard. And that was my response.
They were heard. We all got their email.
Excuse me. Don't interrupt me. Excuse me, please. Mrs. Carmody. Don't interrupt me. So I just want to make sure that our teachers were heard. And that was the point of this Board communication. But I will end with that.
All right. And, and I will say to you, without interrupting you, that of course, all the teachers were heard because we all received the emails, okay? And I think that's where it should end. Moving on, or do I have any other Board communication? I'm sorry. Joe, your hand is up?
This is Carmody, if I may.
Yes.
So sort of shifting gears, certainly this, these past two weeks have been a lot of emails going back and forth, a lot of things to, to sort of think on and ponder. One email that I got, and I believe all of us did, was the, the fifth graders who had essentially sent out their letter.
Were they cute? Oh, they were so cute.
How important it is that snow days, the snow days, and that we don't flip into this virtual learning model.
Yeah, that, that was cute.
So again, like I, I thought that was absolutely excellent. I guess.
They could have hot chocolate, Joe. You know, I thought it was great.
My, my kids are telling me all the reasons every single day, so they've, they've touched on just about every single one of them. Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but you know, ultimately, I, I think I understand where Mr. Fallos coming from in, in his statement. Having read those letters from the teachers, I completely, I hear you. I, I understand the, the concerns. You know, we all have those concerns. We've all had this hit close to home now. So you know, at this point, not, not a single one of us isn't going without being touched by what's, what's happened in the past 12 months. What I will say is, again, being a nurse, you know, having seen patients and sometimes repeat people that happen to stumble and you know, do things that as a nurse, you tell them not to do, but they do it anyway. I believe that we as a Board, as educators, we sometimes have to take that emotion, and it's okay to be emotional about it, but ultimately, what do we do with that? And you know, to, to use it to get angry at each other during a pandemic, during the, the situation that we're currently facing where it seems like it's a wave now. I mean, my kid's school hadn't just had to go into remote learning for, for the foreseeable future into the beginning of January. You know, it's, we all stumble. We're all under a different set of stress and you know, right or wrong or indifferent, I, I think we owe it to each other to be mad in the moment, but then to maybe do a little bit of self-reflection. And to, I, I can't stress enough, to be kind to one another. And I, I feel like that's something that we're, we're not really paying attention to lately. I feel like we immediately chastise people, you know, if you go to a gathering or you do this or you do that. Listen, I don't agree with what you're doing, but I, I understand that everybody's frustrated, and it's about that forgiveness and about being, again, being kind and disagreeing, but through, through argument comes the absolute best decisions and the, the best outcomes for our students, our staff. I, I know that, you know, Mr. McC, Mr. Caneland and I have had our differences, but I'll tell you what, he is a respectable person. I'm proud that he's one of our leaders in this district. I'm proud to be working with him as well. And you know, I, I can't speak highly enough of this district. I think we owe it to ourselves to keep doing well and to do better.
Thank you. And we do. And we can, we can agree to disagree, but to be kind to one another. Thank you, Joe. Miss, here's your hand up, I see.
It is. It is. I wanted to sort of kind of give a couple shout-outs to some groups in our community that are doing exactly what Joe's talking about. STEPS Group, these students, in spite of the pandemic, they are working so hard to get to know each other on a different level. Being part of and watching them grow together, one of the statements, I think Gabe is on, and they said this the other night, that they're trying to get to know each other better this time around at STEPS, you know? And they're, even through Zoom meetings, they're like, "We're trying to get each other as students to make a cohesive plan and not just breaking off into groups right away." And I thought that was refreshing to me, that they're taking the time during this pandemic, during Zoom meetings, to get to know each other's passions and desires for their district and to encourage other students. So I wanted to mention that about STEPS. I also wanted to give a huge shout-out to Stellar Program. I've been working with them closely over the last three months, and this time is so difficult. Trying to find placements and work studies for our. Um, trying to find placements and, um, work studies for our students. Has been a task for Nancy and the whole staff and, and Jessica. And I gotta tell you, they are knocking down doors to do their best to make sure our kids, our students, our young adults don't miss a step. During this time, and it's not an easy task. Um, I've been blessed to be able to work with another Stellar student again for, for five years. And it's been fantastic, but I know their work is hard, but I, I really am so thankful for what's going on. And lastly, our, our PD, I don't know if you guys know that we have a, a police cadet academy. We have eleven students at Southington High School in the Cadet Academy. And they are learning about distressors, how to deal and how to relate to the stress during this pandemic. And our police officers in our district has taken the time to teach our students how to. To relate for themselves and how to see it in others and to get them the proper help and how to be a soother. And we need that. We need help all around. And thank you to our police department for taking the time to teach our students. You know, how to deal with stress and being open with them about the stressors that they have endured and how they.
Missy, you're, you're muted, Missy.
You just muted yourself, Missy.
Missy.
Here you are. She's back.
You're back, Missy?
Yep, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. You were finishing about the police, Missy.
Yeah, the, the cadets are just doing such a wonderful job and our, our lieutenants and detectives are helping them. Learn how to deal with emotional stress during the pandemic and how to share it with their classmates and their friends. And I watched two of these sessions in the last two months and it's fantastic. So I just wanted everybody to know there's so much going on. Um, to help our students cope and to help each other cope and to stay focused. And knowing that this is gonna go past us soon. And, um, when it does, they'll be better off for it. So I just want to share those things.
Well, thank you. How wonderful, Missy. Thank you very much. That's, I, I wasn't aware of the police doing that and, and. Stress is something that we need to deal with, so thank you very much for sharing that. Any, um, other, uh, board members have any, uh, communications? Please, I don't want to miss any hands that I. No, all right. Moving on, um, our student reps, do they, no, I'm sorry, our administration, I'm sorry, Mr. Canel and I. Skipped you.
Also, Mrs. Carmody, we have three items tonight and Mr. Medansi is, is going to handle all three, so Mr. Medansi.
Thank you, Mr. Canel. And I'm gonna throw on two quick ones, just informational, um, and, and positive in nature, just, uh. This, each week I meet with our technology department and this morning when I met with them, part of our agenda, at the very end, we do share outs and shout-outs. And our share outs are very much informational so that everyone's in the loop on certain things happening. And the shout-outs are just kind of a positive ending to our meetings each week about, you know, supporting one another. You know, with the stress of the job and, and, you know, where we're helping each other out in times of need. And the shout-outs today, interestingly enough, and I, and I sent them an email as a department earlier, all went to our maintenance department. As you know, we are often having to shift our devices around right now from school to school in times of need. Our most recent example, Hatton, and I will tell you before, the second we put in the work order in. Immediately, uh, before we even get to school the next day, they're already there. The maintenance is so responsive and getting all the devices shifted around and moved. And there's a lot of them, as you know, with carts and the, the gate truck and being in the winter, it's not, no easy task. But I just, I thought it was, sometimes we lose sight of, of, you know, i- it takes all hands, or you know? Um, and the maintenance department has, has been in the trenches just as much as everyone else, uh, making all of the parts move right now. So that our kids and teachers have what they need, uh, each day. So I, I just wanted to point that out. I was also informed today by the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain, um, that we did receive a ten thousand dollar grant. That, uh, I had applied for about two months back for, on behalf of our Coalition for Social Justice. I had met with them in the spring, uh, with the idea of a COVID Community Support Network. One of the things that we've learned during the, the pandemic right now is, you know, and from looking to the lens of equity. That many families have been hit very hard by the pandemic and there's need beyond what we recognize in our schools. So our goal with this grant is to connect with all the cultural brokers in the community that families may have relationships with or connections to and be willing to go to. Who can look back to the Dris- District, uh, and the Coalition where we can provide assistance during this time. So just a huge plus for us, uh, it's something that we had talked about as a coalition. I'm meeting with the Coalition next week. And so I plan on talking more about our actions with that, that grant, um, as a startup to get this going. So it's just, it's a nice, uh, a nice outcome that I, I felt was certainly worth sharing.
Nice. That's wonderful. Thank you.
The, the three major items that I wanted to speak to tonight, one is, is another great opportunity. I think from, from what I understand, I've only been in this position now. For, for a handful of years, but there's, uh, our adult ed program in district, um. I guess if you compare it to surrounding districts, it's kind of considered the fledgling program. It's, it's not a large program. I think over the years, uh, people can learn things online, courses, you can YouTube pretty much anything, so a lot of the enrichment. You know, opportunities and courses we used to offer, people aren't really signing up for all that much, so we're losing a lot of revenue there. We have a pretty high graduation rate, so our GED numbers are very low, but yet because the state requires us to offer adult education. We are still paying for the teachers, uh, and our ESL numbers this year are down to lower than they've been in quite some time, down to fifteen people total. We only have three students right now in our GED program. And so it's always been one of those things since I've gotten this position where the state had reached out to me. And I had a, a relationship with a person from the state from my previous lifetime, teaching Wallingford. And she just said, you know, you guys really should consider partnering with another district or collaborating because, because they're larger, they can offer things that you can't. And each time I started to pursue that, it was either past the grant window where you have to submit your, your state grant, uh, for adult education. Or the districts that we tried to partner with, it just wasn't financially viable for us. It didn't make a lot of sense. So this time around, knowing that the grant, our numbers were low and that the grant window was in April and that we wanted to have time out front to pursue this. I investigated the option with Bristol and Plainville, um, at the recommendation of the state. They were the two closest districts. And financially, by a landslide, it made the most sense to, uh. Partner with the Bristol Public Schools. And what I would, I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity and the state is for us as well because it will mean a lot to our community. So I want to just talk quickly about what this means for Southington. There will be no additional expense for our Board of Education as a collaboration, so our existing budget will remain. Uh, but it will, the way we offer adult ed will change slightly. There'll still be a site in Southington, of course, it will still be offered in Southington. Our community can now attend course offerings in Bristol. And added to ma- advantage to this is that they have workforce development and manufacturing career pathway programs that we do not currently offer. Additionally, they offer adult ed programming with childcare, uh, during the daytime. Which is something that our community members can take advantage of at no additional cost. Because of their numbers, they offer their courses at different levels. Something we cannot afford to do given our limited numbers and they're having to pay for teachers. And we know when students enter into, whether it's the GED program, uh, or some of the career pathways, they're not all entering at the same level. Our current enrollment, as I talked about, is low. Uh, they're looking to collaborate further in terms of with Plainville, Farmington, um, and Berlin possibly. For federal grants, which could only further develop the career pathways and community programs that we would get federal funding for. Um, so that's an exciting opportunity that, that we wouldn't be eligible for without that collaboration. From an operational perspective, the only shift is that we will be invoiced by Bristol for our share of services and current staff. I've already reviewed what that invoice would be and what we have budgeted for and what their budget, anticipated budget is, and with Mrs. Danello. And it will not, again, it will not cost us any further dollars than what we already paid.
Right.
So, so it's a nice opportunity. Um, I don't know if Mrs. Danello wants to share anything, because I didn't really know the history on this, other than. I was encouraged to pursue it by the state, so I sent Sheri the budget to review prior to Thanksgiving. And I don't know, Sheri, what was your feeling on that?
I told her it was my Thanksgiving present, um, because it's been something that I've been hoping that the district would do. Honestly, for over ten to fifteen years now, um, just knowing that our participation, especially in enrichment classes, has, um. Really gotten a lot smaller because of all the online opportunities that people have. Um, and knowing that, you know, there's only so much you can offer when you have a small population of people taking advantage of it. And I always thought partnering with a, another community would really benefit our residents, so I think it's really exciting.
It is. It's wonderful. Really.
My next, uh, item, which is informational, is just an, uh, an update on our remote, a remote academy. Um, I do want to give a shout-out to, I mean, obviously, all teachers are, are working tirelessly right now. In ways that we would have never imagined having to ask them. Uh, but the remote teachers, one of the challenges they've been up against since the beginning of the year is, you know, teaching fully remote from day one. With students that they've actually never met, um, other than online or at the meet and greet on the first day of school. Trying to connect with those students, develop relationships with those families, assess them, create small flexible grouping for students. And then really transfer everything that normally you might do through a paper, pencil, pen medium in a classroom to a digital format. It takes, it takes a little bit longer on the planning side of things. We are at a point right now that we are, are starting to hit the, what I would call the tipping point, uh, in two fronts. And some of our grade levels were just about at capacity in terms of how many more students we could put in a remote class without overtaxing that teacher. Um, and we're also at the point in the school year that we have to weigh what's best for the child that the parent is opting for remote. Is it with their current teacher who they have established relationships with at their school and their classmates and just streaming into that classroom? Or is it going to the remote academy? So we're at a point right now in the grade levels where I call this at the tipping point, we're hitting capacity. We are going to be recommending that they stream into their current classroom. Um, and it is something many of our teachers have been doing already. I mean, Hatton's a good example, they're going for remote, and now they're streaming their students in from home. One of the challenges in this model, sometimes, as you know, at elementary, which our middle school and high school teachers have been doing from the get-go is. You kind of have to teach to two audiences when we start to go this route. You'll have your students streaming in from home and then you have your in-person learners. And we knew that would be very difficult, especially at our youngest ages. Which is why we supported the remote academy. But I think we just have to be cognizant of, when we get to a point that the numbers don't, you know, justify the, the means. To the end, we have to, to consider a shift in our practice. So, you know, I want to give a shout-out to those teachers in the remote academy, but I also want to inform the board that if we hear about students that are opting to go remote. And there's disappointment amongst maybe a parent in the community that says, why aren't I, I going into the remote academy? It may just be because we're hitting the numbers in the remote academy that we can't assign any more students to that particular teacher. Uh, we have a couple of grade levels still open where there's space, but it is getting closer. And then lastly, um, I attended a early childhood forum as the designee for the school system, um. Couple of weeks back, it was sponsored by the Connecticut Children's Collective, the Middle Sex Coalition for Children. Uh, CSEA and SIEU, Child Care Unions, the Connecticut Association for Human Services and the Connecticut Early Childhood Alliance. And prior to this forum, they asked all of us to watch a documentary called No Small Matters. Uh, after we watched the documentary, we then broke out into, uh, breakout rooms, uh, regionally. And I was with an old friend, Patricia Queen, happened to show up in the room. And, uh, Joanne, Joanne Kelleher and folks from Cheshire had signed up but did not show that day. But we had some very interesting conversations and some information I wanted to share that was an outcome, really of the conversation and also the documentary, I just think it's worth noting. In two thousand seventeen, sixty-two percent of mothers with children under the age of five were working out of the home. Uh, versus twelve percent in nineteen fifty. So, yeah, so you see a need, obviously, that's grown exponentially. Every week, over eleven million US children under the age of five spend more than half of their waking hours in the care of someone other than their parents. The cost of childcare is the same as in-state college tuition. So it's become very difficult for families, working families, when it comes to childcare. Um, although there is some support to provide funding for childcare for lower-income families, it's not available for middle-income families.
Right.
Right? Southington specific, the free and reduced lunch eligibility has increased in the Southington School District from seven and a half percent in two thousand eight. To twenty-four percent last year. Um, and in two thousand twenty, United Way Alice Report showed that twenty-nine percent of Southington households earn less than the basic cost of living for the area. So I found all of those statistics to, to tell a little bit about our community and the changes.
What changes, Steve? What changes? Well, boy, very interesting statistic. Any questions for Steve or comments? I don't, there's a lot of comments I'm sure we all could make, but. Thank you for sharing that, um. It certainly tells us, um, what our society is like now and. Um, some of it is very difficult, but thank you. Um, James, is your hand up or you're just waving to me? No, okay. You're not waving to me, okay. Any other, um, questions for, uh, Steve or from Mr. Canel? All right, moving right along. Um, I have communications from the students and I do not see them, but I'm sure they're there someplace.
Yeah, yes, we are here.
Are you there? Well, hi, guys. How you doing?
We're doing great. Doing good. Good evening, everybody. Um, and congratulations again to our sports teams honored in our celebration of excellence. Um, first on our, on our agenda, Spirit Week is being planned by the class officers from each grade. During December fourteenth, um, through eighteenth and the twenty-first through the twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay, also, um, hey, guys, how is everyone? I hope everyone's having a great night so far. Um, so the National Arm Society, which is led by Ms. Riccio, has been organizing a virtual tutoring program. Um, unfortunately, we haven't seen much success in this program just yet. Um, but we're doing, like the officers in NHS, including myself, are trying to get the word out. And hopefully through the word of mouth, if people, if, um, students, family members can communicate. That this tutoring program is going to help a lot of students this year. As you already know, that remote learning is taking a toll on a lot of people. Um, which you can, we're gonna get to later. Um, also, we, the Board of Ed Student Rep started an Instagram page over the summer of last year. Um, we decided that it was a good way to get information out to get a new board member, which is how we got our new rep this year. And, um, we also decided to take a poll about online learning, um, a couple of weeks ago. And we're gonna share the data with you when we get to our online learning section.
Well, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So the last couple of things on our agenda are, um, from Mr. Pepe. So Mr. Pepe has a, uh, Make My Day Student nominations. Where each department nominates only one student each month to serve as the, quote, "Make My Day" recipient. Typically, Mr. Pepe would call the recipients to his office and make positive, uh, phone calls. In the new year, twenty twenty-one, um, the Make My Day Student nomination would be posted, will now be posted on the high school's webpage. To recognize student accomplishments, which is phenomenal. The Interact Club, led by Miss Ri- or Mrs. Riley, excuse me, is organizing a toy fundraiser. Uh, lastly, or actually, say, second to last, Mrs. De Senza, Mr. Bignacki and Mrs. Anthony ran a virtual. Um, ran a virtual eighth, ninth grade transition event last night titled, quote, "High School Basics One-O-One." And there were a hundred eighty, a hundred and eighty-nine virtual participat- participants attending. So our last item is a little book, a little more about online learning. And I would like to start, and before I get into it, I want to preface this with, I know the board. Uh, you guys do not have total control over in-person learning or remote learning or hybrid learning. So I had a conversation with my family the other night, um, that I think would be valuable to share with all of you. So I realized the other day, when I was talking to them, that distance learning has become increasingly difficult. Earlier in the school year, I said that distance learning has been ban- manageable for the most part. I didn't have any major issues, and I didn't foresee any major issues. But now I would like to retract that statement. Distance learning has become increasingly difficult. As we settle into the new year, I'm sorry, settle into the, as classes have become more adapted to distance learning. The pace has increased and the co- and the content more challenging. Now, my biggest issue is with teacher accessibility and the pace at which I comprehend new material. So for me, I take, uh, three AP classes, I'm in Project Lead the Way and the rest are honors classes, for, for frame of reference. AP classes I know are supposed to be difficult and fast-paced, but with the challenge of me right now being full remote. And attempting to learn AP physics online and do the math associated with it. And to write an essay in AP Lang that has to do with rhetorical analysis. And not having direct, like perfectly direct access to the teacher is, is, is very difficult. And I don't want to say that I speak for myself on this, and I'm sure that both Jelissa, Amrit and the rest of the student body, um, will back me up on this. Amrit and the rest of the student body will back me up on this. So when I'm in school, or when I was in school for the first about a month and a half, two months of school, I was with teachers a couple of days of the week, which was good because I was able to sit in class and I was able to ask them, like, hey, Mr. Tuttle, hey, Ms. Luddy, I got a question about this, or hey, Mr. Olat, I got a question about this. And then my question would be directly answered. And now that teacher is like, one of you mentioned before, have to teach to two audiences, one who is in person and one who's online, it makes it increasingly difficult for me to have my question answered. And for one of my classes specifically, we are quite behind on the AP curriculum, which is, I'm not sure how that racks up to either other schools or other classes that have the same topic and same curriculum, but the pace at which some of these classes are going has slowed down. And although it's slowed down in general, it hasn't made it necessarily easy for myself to at least comprehend these topics. So that's my part. I will let Jelissa and Amrit speak on that.
Brett's explanation is a very good example of how a lot of the student body feels. As I brought up earlier, that we took a poll on our Instagram page where the majority of our followers are from Southington High School or from the Southington Student Body District itself. And the majority of it, I think we had over seventy responses, and sixty-five of them were that teachers are giving a lot of work online. And personally, I feel like I'm in front of my laptop twenty-four seven unless I'm going out for my own personal reasons, which is to go to work or to the store to get groceries or anything like that. And we completely understand that, based off the current situation with the pandemic, it's difficult to decide what to do. But it's honestly very, it's getting very difficult because there's just a lot going on and there's, even like, I know for seniors, a lot of seniors have very relaxed classes, but there are, not even just for seniors, but for like, all people, all students, they are all at different levels of education. And teachers, of course, it's very difficult, are teaching it differently based on what they think is best. And I think Brett brought up earlier with the two audiences. A lot of us, for the student body, we're very social. We know how to talk in front of an audience, but we also have to realize that there's many people who suffer from anxiety and especially in this time of, in this current situation, a lot of students are suffering from many mental health illnesses and we aren't, and they aren't being addressed due to the fact that, and then some teachers will also complain that students don't talk in classes, but that's going to get very difficult because people have social anxiety and they are afraid to ask questions. And if Jelissa has anything else to add.
Thank you.
I don't really have much to add. I think that you both explained it very well. Me being fully remote since the beginning of the year, I've honestly felt very stressed, you know, with all the work that's coming to me. I know I'm taking very rigorous classes, but I honestly, I don't think I leave my laptop until like the very end of the day when I'm going to bed, you know? I honestly know a lot of my peers too, they are doing the best they can, being either hybrid or fully at school, right? But it's so hard learning from just a screen. You don't get the same type of, I guess, learning experience when we're at school. It's not the same. We don't retain the information as well. I know personally speaking, I don't retain the information as well, but, and I really feel for everybody who's going through some like mental illnesses or mental issues going to school or just remote. It's, I know it can be hard.
So I would like to say two more things. To Jelissa's point about retaining information and the learning experience, I think that is the best way to put it. I was, before I was, I was struggling to tell all of you how the difference between online learning and in-person learning, and I'd say that is the biggest difference. It's how I receive my education. Through a computer screen is difficult. And I also want to say that this, this is not to be harsh or to look down on any teacher or the board or the administration about their job, because all of you have done a phenomenal job and we are, the student body is wholly appreciative of what you've done. But we just want to let you know and inform you how we feel in hopes that you can, I'm not really sure what a good word is, forgive me, just know what our perspective is, I guess I should say.
As someone said earlier, to the point that Brett is making, his last point, to understand how we're feeling and instead of responding to it, just to understand what we're going through, which you already are doing, but just to like fully comprehend how the students themselves are feeling and getting it information from us. So thank you.
Well, you know, I thank the three of you for sharing it with us. You know, we, we're not, we as a board cannot know how things are going until you tell us. I'm sure different students have different experiences. We, we try to be cognizant of everything that's going on. You know that everyone that's involved in the school system, administration to your teachers, to your parents, we're all trying to do the very best that we possibly can. And I, I don't know what else to say to you except for thank you for sharing that, making us aware of it. And hope that we can see some light in that tunnel coming up pretty quickly. Continue just to do the best, okay? Joe, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Carmody. So, Mr. Sheldrick, good for you. You know, again, it's having that conversation and being respectful about it and to other people that, you know, you hold in regard, that's the mark of a leader, sir. So, you know, good, good for you, good for you, Amrit and Jelissa, the same, the same thing. It's oftentimes, critical feedback is caustic, it's hard to hear. It's something that nobody necessarily wants, wants to hear necessarily deal with, but I can only speak from my experience. You know, again, my, my mom was always a very big proponent for education in my house because she didn't have the opportunity to go on to college and that type of thing. And her biggest thing was if I got an eighty-five on an exam, was you need to do better. When I got a ninety-eight on an exam, you could have done better. And it sounds kind of silly and trivial, but, you know, we can always do better. And, you know, what we're doing is, is good, you know? It's, it's been working. We're putting out fires as they come. But I think with the input provided by the students, listening to, to scientific experts and things like that, but, you know, maybe utilizing two different perspectives on it and listening and then creating our own paths and, you know, following through, I think is, is essentially where we're going to be heading in the next few months, because again, we can't just keep shying away from the issue, because ultimately, at the end of the day, we need, the Board of Education is here to educate, to help our students, to help them be better. And I think that's, you know, again, we, we need to just do better and take all that criticism. And so, you know, again, thank you. I think it's absolutely awesome. So.
Thank you again. Thank all three of you. Thank you. Moving right along, we'll go to Policy and Personnel, Mrs. Clark, I think that is you. Am I right? Colleen, are you there or did you fall asleep?
I fell asleep, Mrs. Carmody, of course. No, I didn't fall asleep. I'm listening to the kids. Thank you. As Mr. Bajewski said, thank you for sharing what's going on with us. Policy, November seventeenth, we had one, two, three, four, five job descriptions that came before us. We also then looked over policy, the five job descriptions will be coming to you later in the meeting. I don't have page two of this. And we also had our new Series One Thousand, Community and Board Operations that we are reviewing that are coming to you for a first read. And I just want to say, from a business perspective, anytime you have a vacancy in a, in a department, it is always a good time to look to see how are you running, how are you running that department? And I think this is what we're doing now. We're looking at revisiting our technology department, how we're doing things, and these job descriptions are, are part and parcel of that process. So I thank Mr. Medancy for taking the time to look at this and to, to, to share this with us. We made, we did make a couple of changes, but I didn't get any calls from anybody, so I'm assuming all was well with the report. Does anyone have any questions regarding this?
No. Lot of work your committee has been doing, Mrs. Clark.
I would say Mr. Medancy has been doing, and we've been overseeing. Thank you, Mr. Medancy.
Thank you, Mr. Medancy. Next, were there any questions for Colleen? I'm sorry. Okay. Was there somebody I missed a question? Okay. Moving right along, I think it's you again, Colleen.
I'm up again. Okay. This was our Elementary Schools Facility Committee meeting. We met on November thirtieth. Members that were there, we met with Collier and Associates, and we discussed with a review, we opened with a review of the situations at Kelly, Flanders and Darrenowski Elementary Schools. Mr. Warrington shared with us the, an overview, which I thought was very cool, a GIS mapping of the sites with potential changes. We just, we had discussions about square footage required per student, what expenses would and would not be reimbursed by the state, soft costs versus construction costs. Looking at various scenarios, we have, we have a lot of work left to do with this before we present anything to the board. So that was the meeting. Anybody have any questions on that?
It was a good meeting, though. Thank you.
It was. Joe has a question, Joe.
So, so Colleen, I guess my question, so are we looking at a couple of different avenues as far as just like rehabbing buildings versus, you know, again, like thinking about some of the elementary schools that are left?
Yep.
And that kind of thing?
Yeah, what you have to look at, Joe, is what is in the, what is the optimal way to do something? Do you renovate? Do you, or do you build new? Do you have the land to build to new? Do you, you know, all those things that you've got to sit down and you've got to look at each, each scenario to see what makes sense, not only for the, you know, for the students, for the community, that type of thing. So that, you know, we're just, we're just in the very early stages of doing this. But we did see, you know, what land we have available, because in all honesty, having lived through renovations versus building new, you know, what makes sense? Is it better to build new? Is it better to renovate? You live through DePaulo and Kennedy going through that for two years versus one year of building a new school. All those questions have to be, you know, all those, everything has to be looked at first. So that's what we're in the process of doing.
And essentially, Collier is going to be sort of marrying all those different possibilities for us.
Yep, yep, yep. Anybody else?
Any other questions? Did I miss somebody? No, okay. Next is Bob Brown, Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Terry. I'd like to thank, first of all, Mr. Medancy for helping us so much and Mr. Pepe for attending the meeting and helping also committee members, Missy and Terry. It was a long meeting. I'll try to make it pretty quick here. First change, and you should have all received this in the attachments, et cetera. Southington High School Floral Arts Textbook Change. The new book they're looking at has more remote, hands-on lessons than the previous one. It will not cost the board anything because the grant, AgSI grant covers that. Chemistry.
Mr. Brown, can I interject just on that one item, just for a point of information?
Sure.
So tonight, relative to the Floral Culture Book, the, we're going to be looking, normally we do a first and second read of textbooks, and we will do that for the Biology Book that you have on the agenda, but for the Floral Culture Book, they're looking to purchase this second semester, which brings us into our next board meeting. So we're asking the board to approve the purchase of the Floral Culture Book tonight, given that it'll be done with AgSI grant money, funds, and the time sense of nature of them being able to place the order versus two reads. So I apologize for interrupting, but when we get to that agenda item later tonight, that's why it's, there's only one read for that item.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. So we'll need a motion later on then.
Yeah.
Second change is a chemistry change. They basically took a, the four-year chemistry course and want to split it in half. So there's no cost or staffing implication here. The reason, the rationale is, makes sense. They have some students who would take the first half, realize chemistry wasn't their thing, and then be stuck in a whole year course. This way, they can take the first half, get the credit for that, and then maybe take another half year elective. There's no board action required on that one, and there's no cost. Biology, they're rewriting the curriculum, and that is something there's a first read on and will be voted on in, in January. There's a second read on that one.
January, right.
Yep. Forensic science, I don't know if you know this, we have a huge success here. We have a forensic one course, which has over six, has six sections. So now they're proposing a forensic two, which would be the following year for students to take. As far as staffing, that, it's interesting. We still have the same number of students and same number of teachers. So if a student were to take that course, it would be probably in place of something else they might have taken. So there probably will not be, although I don't know if we know that yet, staffing implications. The next one is very exciting. They're all exciting, but, and the teachers did sensational jobs on these. As we met with Tina Ricchio and Michaela Fall, I hope I'm saying that right. He's a French teacher, very impressive man. He's, he's helped to write a French five course, and I didn't realize this, and I actually took French, but it's not French, it's about culture, et cetera, but it's about the culture in Africa and islands that are, oh dear, yelling, that are French speaking. And he, I believe, is native French speaker from Africa, correct, Steve? Right, he was a very impressive man. For us to get this guy is just amazing. And the course looks very exciting. It also will have social consciousness, social media and human rights elements to it. Next is a proposer, proposal for a computer science independent study, which was proposed, which could be a possible capstone graduate project.
That's right.
Yeah, someone have, oh, I'll continue. The next one, Mr. Dernowski asked about earlier, the state has required, and this has been going on for a couple of years now, has required, required an African-American, Black, Puerto Rican, Latino course of studies. That curriculum the state has now issued. So we decided, because we're ready to go with that for next year, even though the mandate from the state is that it's the year after. And this is an unusual situation because the state wrote the curriculum. So we go with what the state wrote on that one. Could there be a staffing implication? It's possible, but again, if someone, it's going to be a four-year elective course. So if someone chose to take that, they probably wouldn't be choosing to take some other electives. But that's something mandated and we have to do, and there is no action necessary. Next one is a simple name change. I'll just do this one quickly. The Office, MS Office one and two is changing to Computer Essentials because it's expanded beyond, beyond Office products. So again, no actions required on that, just a name change for course. And the last one, which is probably the biggest one, and if there's questions, we'd be glad to talk about this one, is Mr. Pepe did an extensive presentation about, I'll try to make this as simple as possible, but a couple of things. We now have co-taught classes in the high school, but the way they're run presently, it limits the options, the students, special ed students. it limits the options that the students, special ed students, students with IEPs have, of courses they could take potentially, because they've got to be in certain periods. It also has caused the numbers in the classes they're in to go past what the state guidelines are. The state guidelines say if it's 50% or more special ed students in there, it's no longer a, it's now a special ed class. So we have classes in the, that were like 60-something percent of special ed students. By making the changes Mr. Pepe is proposing, we will lower the percentage because there's more classes, more periods a day of classes they could take. So those students will be spread out more during the day, if that makes sense. And there won't be, hopefully, classes where there's over 50% special ed students in the same classroom. It also will give them more opportunities of courses to take. So his proposal, and he's also talking about collapsing levels, something that I think there's going to be more discussion of, that's partly from NIASC, and that's an ongoing discussion. But it's, it's complicated what he's proposing as far as the co-taught classes, but it's to solve a couple of problems. And as he said to the faculty, if somebody else has a better way to solve these, he's certainly open to listen, but no one's come up with any other solution. So I don't know if Steve or if Frank want to correct anything I said or add to it, but does that make sense what I said? Okay.
Bob, it makes sense. It's a complicated issue, if you remember. Missy, were you there for that part? Missy?
I was, and I was, and I wanted just to say something that, just something real quick about what Mr. Pepe is trying, you know, to implement. And what he's implementing is something that's going to help our students thrive. You know, he's looking at the thriving rate of our special needs to, you know, to our education overall. And I really encouraged by that. You know, like you said, it's complicated, but we're looking to not just survive anymore. We want all of our students to thrive in our district. And I like the concept of what's going to happen. And it's going to take some work, and it's complicated. But overall, it's for the thriving of all equity all around. Is that what we talked about, Mr. Brown? The equity of every student, right? The equity of every student.
Well, increasing the opportunity for these students, yes.
Right, yeah, it's really going to make a difference. So I, you know, the efforts are going to, you know, long discussions, but well worth what's going to happen and the end for each student.
Right, and again, there's no board action required on that one. That's more informational. There is one real quick other thing we, that Mr. Pepe presented. This has to do with the waiting of the courses. They're not going to have midterm or final exams. So they're redistributing the, each quarter will then be 25%. There was a discussion, someone suggested perhaps waiting certain marking periods more than others because of the circumstances. And the decision was made not to do that, which the committee totally agreed with. Circumstances are what they are this year, and it shouldn't be that one necessarily counts more than another one. So the law count is 25%. Again, that's informational, it's not something we vote on, but. And I'd be glad to answer questions. I know that's a long report, but a lot of good stuff there. A lot of really good work by our teachers, administrators, and, and Mr. Pepe and Mr. Medancy.
Any questions for Bob? Okay, moving on. Colleen, again?
Yeah, we had a second, we had a second policy and personnel meeting. And at the meeting, we had two job descriptions. One of which, the first one was the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, which what we were doing was updating it to include the addition of supervision of the Technology Department with the Technology Leadership Team. And the addition of a requirement of a Connecticut certification, O-93 was also added. Which, Mr. Medancy, when did that change that you had to have that?
I want to say 2015. It was the year after I started. So people who were already in this type of role prior to that passing would be fine. It's people who get it after that.
Okay, okay. And then the second job description we're bringing tonight is the Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary Education. It is a new job description. So I don't know if anyone had any questions regarding these two.
Were we taking any action on these tonight, Colleen? No, right?
Yes, we are. No, we are.
Later on in the
Yes, yes, later on in the meeting.
Okay, got it. Any questions of Colleen before we go on? Okay. The Personnel Report, may I have a motion from someone, please?
Move to approve the Personnel Report as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Let me get my white paper out now. Next, we have the Capital Improvement Plan for 2021, 2025, 26. And this is our second reading. You know, very thoroughly done. I hope you all had a chance. It was a lot to read through. I don't know if I have anyone with any questions? Who's hand? Let me see. Go ahead, Joe.
If I may. So I know that I had missed last meeting where I think we went over this more thoroughly. So I'll certainly be brief. There was a couple of larger projects on there as far as, I think there was, it's more like to be determined and things like that. And I guess it boils over into the Elementary School Committee and everything else. So some of those projects that are potentially going to have to get done, that's going to potentially change based on the plan that we come up with with Collier versus like a rehabbing a school versus new building of a school and
Can I respond to that, Mrs. Carmody?
Of course.
Okay, thanks. Years ago, when we redid, the last two schools that I was involved with, which at the time were planned, it was, it was Plansville and South End, there was a lot of discussion as to whether or not we should put in air conditioning. And air conditioning was something that was not in any of the other schools. There was a price tag with that, and it was felt at the time that air conditioning was not going to be needed at the elementary school because little people don't need air conditioning, I guess. The teachers, we don't even think about. But that being said, when we had the discussion with Colliers and we were talking about the new, either, either, in either scenario, either renovate to new or build brand new, the discussion again came up about the air conditioning, which I then said, well, little people don't need air conditioning, right? And that's wrong. Everyone needs air conditioning because we're talking about air quality in the schools. And we're talking about people, our teachers being comfortable, little people being comfortable, the global warming, if you want to even go with that. So air conditioning is going to be considered for the new school, for the new, the two new schools, as we already have it at the high school and the two middle schools. With that being said, if we do it in those two schools, what about the other schools? So that is something we have to look at, you know, long term. How are we going to put in air conditioning? What do we do to the existing schools? All that sort of thing. So that's where the air conditioning came back up.
Right. And I guess my, my only, and it's not even so much a concern. And I know that all of our heads are in the right place as a board. It's just more of, I like to sometimes think out loud to let our teachers know, let Sutherland public know, because essentially that's ultimately why we're able to do the things that we do because of our taxpayers. Is, again, like not necessarily planning on replacing a roof and then, oh, by the way, in two years, we're going to try and rebuild the building. And, you know, that's, like, it's just making sure that that plan is really tailored in. Explaining to people that, no, we actually don't do things willy-nilly like that, that there is a plan in place and
An actual, yeah, an actual plan to do things so that we schedule things, like you said, that we're not taking off a roof and then rebuilding the building completely or tearing it down, whatever, you know, whatever it is, that there is a schedule and a plan, yeah.
My favorite example is when we do a, they pave a brand-new road, and then two months later, they cut a big line through it to then replace a pipeline. And now we have that sinkhole for the next 20 years before they repave it again.
Hopefully, we won't have any sinkholes in our, in any of our properties, Mr. Wachowski. Hopefully, hopefully.
Any other questions on the capital plan?
Tim had his hand up.
I'm sorry, who does?
Tim, Tim had his hand up.
Oh, Tim, I'm sorry.
I can't tell because of the picture thing. It's sometimes
You're in the water.
Sorry, I apologize. The, the plan is exactly what the conversation was about, or a portion of the conversation was about with the, with the Collier Group, that anything moving forward the community wants to do with regard to the elementary schools needs to, needs to be within the context of a, of a larger vision. I think that's some of the discussion that the, that the committee was having. And the state is very, very cognizant of the fact that they want to invest all of our dollars because this, you know, the money comes from all of us at the state level. So they're very cognizant of the fact that there needs to be an integrated plan moving forward, regardless of what we do. The, a couple of things that you saw on there, Mr. Wachowski, with the TB, TBD, the to-be-determined, is because we knew that there was going to be some activity surrounding the, the elementary schools, you know, the last three schools that have not been renovated. And we needed to make sure that that was in there in the capital improvement plan so that people realized it was something that was, that was going to need to be addressed. Because there were a couple of items in there. One was, one was the air conditioning piece, and then the other was the security cameras and redesigning the, you know, the vestibules, the entryways of the schools. Those are, those are things that are in there as TBD, but that's why. So that, so that they're in, so that we know they're there, and they're going to be something that needs to be addressed as part of, a part of the overall plan.
Bob? Bob Brown?
Yeah, I just want to kind of give Joe a little more information because he's not on the Building Committee. Another factor that's really important to consider is what things will the state reimburse us for? And what will they not reimburse us for? I was pleasantly surprised in the meeting to see that new construction will actually not cost nearly as much as, as I thought. And, and whereas rebuilding things actually may end up costing more money.
Double your costs, right?
Right. And the second thing, just to reiterate something Colleen alluded to, that the air conditioning piece, it's, yes, air conditioning is nice to get cooler temperature, but with air quality, and you deal with this probably much more than most of us, Joe, being a really important part of moving forward with COVID and with students in school, this is a way of increasing the, the security and safety of our students and staff. So it's not just to keep it cooler.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Mrs. Carmy, if I may, if there's no other questions, I at least wanted to take a moment to recognize the work of Mrs. Jennifer Mellett, our accounting manager, who does a lot of work in putting this document together. And also this year was, you know, added responsibilities in working with our Athletic Director, Mr. Ritter, and because of the athletic feasibility study. And as always, Mr. Romano always has a lot of input to this document as well. So I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the work that they did in putting this capital plan together. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Sheri. And we all do appreciate the work of them, and we get the emails from them, so thank you. Moving on.
Make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan
Thank you, I'm sorry to say.
21, 22 to 2025, 26, as presented by administration.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, thank you, Isaiah. Now I'm on down Government Communications, don't have anything. Tim, do you have anything? Okay. School Calendar Proposal to Modify. I would imagine that you all read it and the reasons for. Do I have a motion or first, do I have any questions?
Move, move to approve a modification to the 2020, 2021 School Calendar that includes Wednesday early release days for Sutherland High School and Tuesday early release days for both DePaulo and Kennedy Middle Schools as proposed by the administration.
Second.
Second? Do I have a second?
Yeah. Missy.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Energy Management System Upgrade, Upgrade, excuse me. I need two motions here, correct? So can someone give me motion one?
To rescind the motion from the November 12th, 2020 Board of Education meeting that reads as follows. Move to waive the bid process to upgrade the energy management systems at South End, Oshana, and the ASTE Building and allow Connecticut Temperature Controls, or CTC, to perform the work as the proprietary vendor.
Second?
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I need another motion, please.
Move to waive the bid process to upgrade the energy management systems at South End, Oshana, and the ASTE Building and allow automated logic to perform the work as the proprietary vendor.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, new business. Proposed School Calendar. It's our first reading. Excuse me. It's the first reading, so we can make some comments on it or do it tonight or bring the question to Tim at some later date. Or do I have any comments tonight? Any questions?
Tim has his hand up.
Mrs. Carmy?
It's hard for me to see you. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tim.
I'm sorry. So the, what we tried to do this year is essentially a hybrid of some of the things that we did last year, which are putting all of the professional development days and teacher work days right up front because our staff really seemed to like that, and it, and it was a good productive use of time. And at the same time, restore what we had traditionally been doing with starting students on a Thursday. So we have two days, then Labor Day weekend, and then four days, and then five days, which we like, especially for our younger students. It eases them in, if you will. Everything, everything else in there is very similar to what we had, what we've had in the past. So that's why we sort of turned it a hybrid model. But that's, again, it's a first reading. We would bring it back to the board for consideration and adoption at the January, at the first January meeting.
First January meeting. Anyone have any questions or comments on the calendar? Dave Durnowski?
Are we going to have calendar actually put out to the PTOs?
Yes. You know. Yes, what we, what we usually do, what we've been doing for the last six or seven years was bring it to the board first, getting input on it, and then sending it out to the PTOs, sending it out to all of our union constituents.
We'll be getting the feedback prior to our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? On the calendar? Okay, so we'll expect a second reading and an approval in January, Tim?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of job description. Let me get my notes out here.
May I make a motion, Mrs. Carmody?
You know, you really talked an awful lot tonight.
I know, I know. But can I make this motion, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Carmody.
You're so welcome.
Move to approve the draft job descriptions for Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Director of Teaching and Learning for Secondary Education, Digital Learning Coordinator, Information Systems Manager, Executive Assistant to Superintendent, Executive Assistant District Registrar, Secretary to Director of Operations, as recommended by the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, Mrs. Clark, carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
Oh, you're so welcome. Moving on to our, which I lost my paper, hang on. This is you too, huh, Colleen?
Yes, it is, Mrs. Carmy. These are all first reads, though, Mrs. Carmody.
All right, so I, they're, yeah, okay, go ahead.
These are the first reads of the policies. So that, yeah.
Okay. So that's C, D, E, F, G, they're all first readings, correct?
Right, that is correct.
And the last reading, first reading, goes to you, Mr. Brown, for the first reading, I guess. It's just for the adoption of the I guess, is just for the adoption of the textbook for, Steve, what did you say? That's gonna go through right away, right?
Yeah, it's for the two middle school, sorry, sorry, high school exi floral culture books.
Okay, okay. Those are all first reading. All right.
No, we have to approve those.
We don't need a motion on that. Do we need a motion for that, Steve?
Yeah, I'm gonna make it.
Go ahead, Bob.
I move we approve the exi purchase, the new floral arts textbook, as recommended by the department chair and the CNI committee, and do that for January.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we don't do the biology ones, Steve, right?
Correct. We can do that in January.
All right, thank you. All right. And the last item on our agenda, which I will turn over to.
I apologize. We have one other item.
Did I miss something?
It's, it's a, well, we need to probably add it to the agenda. So I'll, I'll go to our, our parliamentarian here in terms of how we go about doing this with that motion and the conversation of the white glove service.
So you would, you would need, a member, a board member would need to make a motion to add that as an agenda item and then it becomes an agenda item and then a motion to approve that discussion, et cetera.
Okay. So if I can give some background and then you can make the motion if you'd like to, to add it to the agenda. One of the agenda items that I found about, out about late this afternoon was relative to the arrival of our large Chromebook delivery and the timelines associated with that. And it looks like right now it's going to be landing right on the, hopefully, I'm, we're literally exchanging emails with the vendors now by the last week in December. The challenge is that falls up against the holiday break and when, when several staff are, may or may not be available, but also a risk with trying to get all of my staff together, which may not be the best thing in COVID, to try and unbox all of the devices, asset tag them, image them and assign them to the network. And we're talking roughly 3,000 plus devices, which would take a couple of weeks and probably would take one of the gymnasiums at the high school offline to do this. Originally, when we thought we were going to be doing this, the original timeline, as you all know, was around October and we were hybrid and we worked with the administration of the high school. It said at the time, we can definitely get you half of one of the high school gymnasiums to corner off that area and get this done. Now we're at a time where they're, they're not outdoors for PE anymore and we're, we're lose a lot of our, we looked at every large space in the district in terms of where we could do this. We even inquired with the Calendar House or wherever we could do this, because it's going to be a huge amount of equipment. So what I'm looking to, to ask that a board member consider making a motion to add, a move to add item 11J, waiving the bid process for white glove service to the agenda, and then I can give you more information regarding that.
So say, so say the, what you want to add it again. I didn't quite get it.
We, we would look to add a motion to move to add item 11J, waiving the bid process for white glove service to the agenda.
I'll make that motion to add item 11J to waive the bid process for white glove service.
Second.
Any questions, anybody? No hands up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so now I'll talk to you about what the white glove service is and then I will inter, you know, I'll introduce a motion that you can vote for. At this point, that would truly be the board's prerogative whether they want to support this or not. One of the things we got from the state order that we hadn't been necessarily aware of, for $10 a device, it can be shipped to a separate company who will unbox them all, asset tag them, assign them all to our network, crate them all and deliver them all in PC carts, which essentially gets them up and running a lot quicker than we're going to be able to with our technology staff. We just don't have a lot of staff to do that. We don't have a lot of space to do that. And as I also said, there's associated risks for me in terms of me thinking about getting my staff together for a large amount of time over several weeks to do this. So the white glove process at, at roughly $10 a device, if we were looking at anywhere from 3,000 to 3,400 devices, it wouldn't cost us more than $34,000. This would be part of the money from the 1.9 million in terms of the technology piece. But it essentially gets the devices delivered to us ready to go out of the, out of the, we call it a PC crate, not even in a box anymore. And then they come and take all the crates and everything when they're done. We don't have to rent the dumpsters and all that. We don't need the space. And essentially, they're up and running right out of the box on our network. So it's an option that we can purchase that, like, again, I learned about it after the state order came because we had that option and it was amazing how seamlessly and how quickly we were able to turn those devices around into buildings. And I wanted to, you know, to, to share that with the board, knowing that we are up against a little bit of a timeline right now with our ability to get devices in the hands of kids and the schools having to close on occasion unexpectedly. And we don't know how much longer it may be before, if the state may recommend something of that order or if another school has staffing issues and we have to close down. So the sooner we can ensure everyone is one-to-one. And another advantage to that is the remote snow days. I know we'll talk about that as a district, but we can't even entertain that as an option if we're not a one-to-one district. The commissioner has said all students would have to have device access and, and network access. And we currently don't, can't be assured of that right now. Isaiah?
Good question. So if your staff was to do this, I'm just looking at timing, how long would it take for them to credential and asset tag 30, 3,400 units versus what's the, what's white, white glove offering is their type?
So white glove guarantees one to two weeks turnaround time on all, all devices. It took us, over Labor Day weekend, if you guys remember, we started on a Saturday morning and we worked night to evening, the entire department, through Labor Day, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, for roughly, at the time, it was 425 Dells. So if we're talking 3,400 devices, it's going to take a long time.
And we need to get these into the hands of the kids, so.
That, that's my worry. It's a combination of how quickly we turn that around for families and the risks associated with having the entire department congregated in one place to get it done.
It's $20, how much each?
$10.
$10, okay.
Mr. Dernowski?
Yes, Dave?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to move to, I guess, yeah, waive, waive the bid process, you know, for the white glove service.
I second it.
So all those in favor?
Mr. Dernowski has a question.
Dave, I'm sorry.
Quick question. And the 30 to $34,000 will actually be covered under the grant.
Mrs. D'Nello?
We have an option of paying for it through our choice funds or paying for it through our non-lapsing account. In our conversations, we thought this afternoon using the choice funds was a better avenue so that we're hoping to have funding left in our non-lapsing account to do some projects at the end of the year if we don't need it all for COVID-related costs.
Okay, but we are covered.
Yeah.
Not coming out of operating funds.
Correct.
Okay, then I'm good.
You're good. So, okay, once again, Dave, we made, we had the motion, someone seconded. We had the questions. So, so I'm going to ask again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Our, our last agenda item, I will turn over to Mr. Canelon, I think.
Hey, thank you. You know, we thought we've actually put this last because it's a, it's an uplifting thing. Many of us had the privilege to know and work with Karen L. Smith, former teacher in this district, former principal, former assistant superintendent, acting superintendent for a while. And we all know of her dedication to children and the work that she did while she was in all of those roles. Well, once Mrs. Smith retired, she came back in a volunteer capacity and she worked with the students and the staff at Alta and just became enthralled with her work there. And that, and that became her passion. And she took that on as she did everything else. And I see, I see Jess is here, Mr. Levin is here, who's our, who's our director at Alta. Through some conversations with Mr. Madancy, Mr. Levin, his staff, students, we talked about, wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be wonderful to rename this program after Mrs. Smith? And we did put a small committee together to talk about how we could do it. Now, of course, we're in a situation where we can't really do a, a big dedication right now. So we're kind of doing a save the day because we'd like to do this in a, in a very public way, invite Karen's family to come. But Jess and his staff and the students there designed a new sign for the, for the, for the building, for the school building. And they're all very, very, very excited. And, and here in Southington, we have a, a long history of faculty and staff naming programs. And, you know, Alta wasn't always Alta. For those of you who remember, Alta was rope at one point in time.
I do. I remember.
Which was reach out to people through education. And because of the impact that Mrs. Smith has had on the students and on staff, we thought that, and on this entire community, quite frankly, we really wanted to do something to honor, honor her memory. And we thought that renaming this program in her honor would be just something she would have absolutely loved. Now, Mr. Levin, I see you're, I see you're here. Can I put you on the spot for a minute? Do you want to, do you want to say a couple of things about how this came to be with your, with your staff and your students?
Yes, thanks, Tim.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't tell him ahead of time I was going to call him.
Karen started volunteering with us after she had to retire and then got sick and then got better. And then she started one or two days a week, which turned into three or, three or four days a week for probably the better part of four years. I could go into, you know, the things that she did for the students and the staff, but it was an amazing experience. I think it changed the, 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 the culture of the, of the school, the outlook of the building. And it's, it's fitting beyond belief and we're, we're so excited. And we wish we could still have her here. But the Karen Smith Academy, that's all I have to say.
That's enough, Jesse. We, we can, we can hear it in your voice and we know what's in your heart, Jesse. So.
Well, well said, Jesse.
Well said, Jesse.
We do, we do have, there are an awful lot, especially of our administrative leadership team that I know are, are still here tuned into the, into the meeting this evening. I'd love to have everyone say something. Obviously, time doesn't allow that. But I do, you know, Mr. Madancy, I give Mr. Madancy a lot of credit for really the origination of, of the name, if, if you will, and what it would be. And so, Steve, I know I didn't, I didn't say I was going to call on you this evening, but if you don't mind, it would be nice if you, if you said a couple of words.
I think we all knew Karen well. Karen was a mentor to me. She's been a mentor probably to every one of us in some way, shape or form. Those of, those of us who knew her that are on this meeting tonight, you know, her knack was that she made every one of you feel like she was your best friend. Because, you know, and I asked her tonight, you know, seek to understand. And she was one of the best listeners I knew. She did very little talking, you know, about herself and, and her tribulations, even right to the end, all she did was listen to others and support them. I would get so many random texts and emails from Karen, just giving me atta boys and cheering me on all the way to the end. So I just thank Tim for considering this and the board and the staff at Alta. I've loved to know them, not nearly as well as Karen did, but I just think they make a difference in the lives of kids. And to have her name on that building is an exclamation point on the legacy of a wonderful woman.
So thank you, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, board, for, for doing this.
Jesse, don't go yet. I have a letter, I have an email from her family, if I may read it.
Colleen, before that, can I just, that would be the culmination of what we're saying. I grew up in Cheshire and my father served on the Board of Education and was chairman of the Board of Education and worked with Karen for many, many years. And teaching wasn't my first career. And when I was a teacher and I was looking to become an administrator, my father said to me, I will never forget it, he said, you could never work with a better person than Karen Smith. And I was incredibly fortunate enough to come to Southington and become an administrator here and work under her. And I learned so much from her. And I like to think that my dad had a little part in that, just because of his close relationship with her as they worked together on, in, at the Board of Education. So with that being said, Colleen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Tim, is it okay if I read this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good afternoon. I see on the agenda for tonight's Board of Education meeting, you have the renaming of Alta to the Karen Smith Academy. I am her sister Nancy and on behalf of the family, we would like to thank you so much for this incredible honor. During this pandemic, so many have lost loved ones and have not been able to hold a proper funeral memorial for their loved one. By Southington Schools, renaming the Alta program after Karen certainly helps us to honor her memory forever. And we thank you all so very much. We are so proud. With much appreciation, Nancy Swanson, her sister, Dawn Smith, her husband, Donnie Smith, her son, Kristen Rice, her daughter, and Eric Karak, who's a nephew. And P.S., if possible, would you be so kind to share this tonight? Thank you again.
That was lovely. And, and I have seen the sign. And I don't know who designed
it, but I loved the red, because, you know, her with her red lipstick, Jesse, it was perfect. It was perfect.
Carrie, one of our teachers actually designed the logo.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, that was great.
Our science teacher, Ellie Chinqua, designed the logo.
Well, you know what? I saw it and, and it, Jesse, I know how happy it makes you and, and.
Thank you.
We all need happiness in our life right now. You know that. And what a great way to end an evening on a happy note. So.
Read. Thank you.
I, I thank all of you. And Mr. Dernowski, I think you have a job to do.
I don't think you want me to do it.
No, not yet.
Why would you have to do?
I thought we needed to go back into executive session.
Sorry, I forgot.
If you want, I will adjourn and.
I'm sorry, Dave. I forgot.
So Dave, you want to do the, do we have to do another motion?
Just moving back into executive session.
Do I have to push any buttons, Tim?
Yeah, if you, if you would exit this one and click the original executive session link.
Oh, you think I'm going to be able to do that?
Can we take a two-minute break so we can, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Merry Christmas to everyone that we won't see.
Yes, Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Same to you, Jesse.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.